All right, good evening. Today is Monday, February 6, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Lori, Zach and Cynthia, all in favor?
All right, great.
We're just going to, we're going to go into executive session for a brief executive session about personnel, and then we'll back out at 7:30 for the, for the public meeting. So please be patient with us. Do you have a motion to enter executive session? Lori, Zach and Cynthia, all in favor? All right, great. See you in about a half an hour. All right. All right, good evening. Today is Monday, February 6, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We actually opened the meeting already at around 7 o'clock. We had an executive session to talk about some personnel matters, and now we're back out for the public meeting, so we don't need to open the meeting that's already been done. So we can, first of all, like to apologize to our audience for being a little bit late. We tried to be prompt, but we just ran a little behind, so I apologize for that. So our first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on creation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
You want to do the presentation, you have to do this. That's what, first off? Okay. No, that's okay. Was that on the, uh? All right, yeah, so we're just gonna, we're gonna jump a little bit out of order on the agenda. We're actually gonna jump to number three first, which is the superintendent's introduction of student liaison, so we're gonna do that first.
So I know the students, especially these two students are so hardworking that I need to get them home so that they can do some more studying, right, guys? So first, I would like to introduce John Silvestri. He is a senior at Tocco High School. John is a person who is always kind to others and is a role model to our younger students. His hard work in the classroom and smiling ethic makes him stand out. He is thoroughly immersed in community service in our town. John is a member of the youth ministry at St. Joseph's Church. He has helped create lunches for those in need and put together stockings at Christmas for the less fortunate. At E-CAP, John has raised awareness for a coat drive, which he spearheaded, and people donated coats to those who needed them. He maintains a 3.5 average and, upon graduation, wants to major in architecture. And he told me he already has an internship lined up in architecture. He has an awesome portfolio, so he's already gotten into some great colleges, a few of them I'd like to mention, are Temple University, University of Buffalo, and University of Rhode Island, which is really, really hard schools. But he's also gotten into nine schools already, right? Nine so far?
Yep, exactly.
And he is waiting for some real favorites, so if any of you out here are alumni for Syracuse University, which has an excellent architecture program, and I'll give a little call for you to give a shout out. He's really very talented. Outside of the classroom, John is a student athlete that participates in varsity football and varsity baseball. He displays a desire to always get better and has shown a commitment to hard work on and off the field. John was a member of our Section 1 championship football team in the fall and a returning member of our Section 1 baseball championship team for the spring. And John's gonna give us an update on athletics.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity. So our varsity boys' basketball team has a record of 10 wins and 4 losses. They are currently the number one seed in Class C, and the boys beat the league rival, Alexander Hamilton, at home and are currently playing on the road versus Leachon High School. We are looking forward to a deep playoff run, and, yeah. So the JV boys' basketball followed up with a win of their own versus Alexander Hamilton last week. The JV team has three games left in the season. The modified boys' basketball team continues to impress, defeating the Barack Obama School in Woodlands this past week. The boys have four games left in the season. The varsity girls' basketball team secured the league title for the second straight season. They will host Rynek and Cardinal Spellman High School this week. The JV girls' basketball team has a record of 9-2. The girls have three games left in the season. The modified girls' basketball team continues to improve. They defeated, they defeated Barack Obama School in Irvington this past week. The girls have three games left in the season. Our varsity bowling season has come to an end. We celebrated our six seniors and thanked them for their true dedication to our bowling team and athletic program. Varsity cheerleading placed first at the Warwick Cheer Competition last weekend. We also just held our national showcase and senior recognition ceremony in the gym. The girls are off to nationals on Wednesday. We wish them luck in Disney. Our modified cheer team placed third at the Warwick Competition and will travel to Putnam Valley Competition next week. Our pioneer team is gearing up to begin basketball season in early March. Our two merged programs, ice hockey and wrestling, are beginning preparation for postseason participation. And for the senior updates, we will celebrate our four seniors from the varsity girls' basketball on Friday, February 10 at 4:30 p.m. And we will also celebrate our seven seniors from varsity boys' basketball on Monday, February 13 at 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, John.
Appreciate it. Nice job.
Tonight, I also have the pleasure to introduce senior Samantha Santo-Liquido. Cinco, remember, I was gonna say, Santo, Santo-Liquido. Santo-Liquido, didn't I tell you I was gonna do that? Don't worry about tripping over your words. Dr. Goodman does it all the time. Samantha presents herself as a leader to her peers through her good-natured spirit and participation in National Honor Society activities such as tutoring first grade Ian L. students. Additionally, one of Samantha's passions is competitive dance, and she told me all about that. She works 10 hours a week and has been doing that since she's eight years old. So she really is very dedicated to that. All the while, she's taking challenging AP classes and maintaining a 3.6 GPA. With those scores and other achievements, Samantha has been accepted into some great schools also. University of Indiana, Michigan State, Penn State, and is awaiting decision from University of South Carolina. Outside the classroom, Samantha participates in many extracurricular activities. Samantha is a member of our school's chorus of vocal cats. Athletically, Samantha is on our varsity lacrosse and tennis team. Overall, Samantha's achievements, both on the academic and extracurricular level, reflects a hard-working and determined student. Samantha, can you give us a school update, please?
Yes. On Thursday, January 19, we held our winter varsity team media night. Each of our varsity teams had a blast getting photographed by Ryus Media with our new athletic backdrop. Then, on Friday, January 20, we held Black and Orange Day, which included our winter pep rally recognizing all of our winter athletic teams. School spirit was on full display with black and orange attire throughout the gym. This day concluded with the entire Tocco community coming out in full support of our varsity girls' and varsity boys' basketball teams as they battled cross-town rival Eastchester in the annual Augie Nardone Scholarship Game. The proceeds from the event go towards a scholarship for one Tocco student and one Eastchester student. On Monday, January 23, we celebrated our varsity bowling seniors with a rose ceremony at Buller Land in Bronx. The Tocco High School Winter Snowball Dance was held on Friday, February 3 from 7 to 9 p.m. in the high school gym. We hosted approximately 80 students for a fun-filled night of music, dancing, and great food. Then, our seventh and eighth grade students have been engaged in a workshop-based program being provided by Lilly Newman, Community Outreach Coordinator for the Maxwell Institution. The discussion topics include vaping, nicotine, the developing teenage brain, and addiction. Miss Newman will be back for her second session with both grade levels in the coming weeks. Then, our snow, our snow sports club returned for the first time since the 19 to 20 school year. Forty-four high school students attended the trip to Catamount Mountain. The second trip is scheduled for February 11. Our middle school students, oh, sorry. Our middle school strength took a field trip to the New York Philharmonic Young People's Concert. Our high school, school Olympia team competed at Scarsdale High School this past Saturday. Tocco was well-represented in all these areas of the competition. Our high school entrepreneurs who class will be presenting to fourth-grade students at Cottle on Wednesday, February 15. They have designed advertisements and prototypes to gauge the interest of the fourth graders. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Great update. Thank you very much. Do you want to do my update and then do my?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Great job, guys. Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to give my update and then I could do my presentation, because it's been such a good week. And even though it's only been a week since our last meeting, there has been a lot to celebrate. Firstly, the district went to celebrate Black History Month. In the classroom, special spotlight will be shown on the contributions of Black and then women. These contributions are a part of America's story and are, of course, woven throughout our curricula. We enjoy celebrating those contributions with our students across the district as we do for all ethnicities. This weekend, our students gathered for the Winter Snowball Dance hosted by our high school G O. and grade-level advisors. Over 80 high school students participated, and it was a hit. It really was. And as I said on Facebook, our kids can dance, and they can celebrate, and they showed off those dance moves, and they ate some delicious food. It was great to see the student community come together and have fun. We really need to continue to do that. Additionally, our students at the middle and high school got their first look at our new cafeteria, and they were really thrilled. With funding from the 2021 bond, the original cafeteria for the middle high school was renovated, and students now get to eat in this new, modern, state-of-the-art cafeteria. And those of you who have middle school and high school students, I hope they came home and told you about it. Mm-hmm. And they also had delicious food, too. We are already changing the menu. We are so happy that these students now enjoy all these amenities in this beautiful cafeteria. The furniture, even though it looks nice, those, those orange chairs are the furniture, but we have other modern tables on the way, and the finished project will even look better than it looks now, which looks pretty awesome. We are also approaching the ribbon cutting of our middle school, high school library. The board and I have had the opportunity to tour the space as it's getting built, and we know the students are in for a treat. Like, if you guys liked the cafeteria, you're gonna love the library. It also is very new, very modern, very state-of-the-art. And we are finishing, I have unfinished touches with technology. There are breakout rooms behind glass up on top, and communal study spaces, comfortable chairs to read and to study. Again, lead time of furniture are posing a challenge, but that won't stop them from getting into our new space, and we're hoping to do that the end of February. And thank you all for your patience. It's going to be something really worth waiting for. Tonight, we will share the results of an in-depth search for a new principal in the wake of Dr. Lenahan's retirement announcement. We are delighted to have the finalist in the audience with us this evening, as well as his close family and friends. Tonight is the beginning of an exciting new chapter for Tocco as we continue leading the way.
All right, thank you. You want to go right into your presentation?
Okay.
So, yes, so Dr. Goodman has a pretty brief presentation on the budget process. We're gonna hold off our comments as the board until after that.
Robert, Zach, please.
Yep, let me get out of the way. Yeah, I'll move out of the way.
You guys might want to see it.
I can see, break in. Shall we go down?
Good evening, trustees, and good evening to the Tocco school community, both here and at home. Last week, Ms. Sparks, our business manager, who unfortunately could not be here today, provided a comprehensive overview of the financial landscape on which we find ourselves. With that in mind, we turn to the priorities and commitments that are driving how we are entering the budget process. Tonight, I will discuss our priorities and commitments. I will return to the strategic plan and detailed curricular initiatives, extracurricular opportunities, and facilities work within the framework of our district's vision. We will further understore our commitment to fiscal responsibility and sustainability and communicate the ways we are ensuring transparency during the budget development process. And you guys are all used to seeing this, but as you know, our strategic plan is organized around student achievement. Meanwhile, our budget is based on the four pillars of our strategic plan. It's important that any change to our budget promotes social and emotional learning, contemporary teaching and learning strategies, programs to meet the diverse needs of learners, and professional learning to build our capacity in accompli, in accomplishing our ambitious On this slide, I share the leadership's team commitment as we roll out our proposal budget over the next few meetings. Firstly, in terms of fiscal responsibility, we commit to stay within the cap. While inflation and disruptions to supply chain have definitely impacted our operations and efforts, we understand these impacts have also landed on our families. While it may make sense, in a tight fiscal year, to push a budget beyond the New York State cap, we commit to staying within the tax cap. This is especially important to us as a leadership team, as we appreciate the support the community has shown in our previous bond proposal and in discussions of our upcoming bond capital project. We also anticipate changes in the, in the economic climate, so we are being conservative in our planning and prudent in our implementation timelines. Lastly, we are only investing in programs closely aligned with the strategic plan that has guided our efforts over the past years. We are committed, more than anything, to preparing our students for excellence. This is the, this is really the crux of everything we are trying to do in Tocco. Secondly, in terms of transparency, we want to be clear about our planning process and the details of our proposal. This is why in the next few meetings, we will be dedicated to the proposed budget. A school district's budget is complex, and it is also the manifestation of an institution and community's wishes and values. We commit to a series of workshops to unpack the elements of the proposal detailing both the process and the final project. We also commit to being responsive to questions and concerns. Please feel free to reach out to me throughout this whole process, and also Ms. Sparks or anyone on our building leadership teams if you have any questions about the proposal, and also come to our meetings. Okay, so here's the strategic plan again. It's here again to remind you that everything we're doing is around that plan. I think it just keeps popping up. We're okay. Okay, and our district, again, these are the board's goals, so we're organized around the mission to prepare our students for excellence. Our board also expects us to enhance academic performance for success in college and career and citizenship, build strong relationships between the district and the community, and to ensure fiscal responsibility and sustainability. The missions and these goals continue to undergrid what we're doing. Now, here is, and we will go more in depth with this in upcoming budget presentations. With these goals in mind, I will preview the initiatives that you will hear about in detail at our upcoming budget workshops. First, let's turn to Cottle. Curricular initiatives at Cottle that we are looking to continue funding include our focus on early literacy, and you know we have been doing that for the last couple of years, and we're getting great, great results with that. As you know, we have introduced foundations, but we continue to build a comprehensive approach to teaching literacy that is based on the latest research in cognitive psychology and linguistics. The goal of this initiative is to ensure that all students have the foundational skills necessary for reading and writing success. In the classroom, students participate in lessons that emphasize phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Teachers use a variety of instructional methods, including direct instruction, small group work, and individualized support to meet the needs of all students. They are also regularly assessed with, with progress monitoring. So we really are looking at where students are and giving students that are achieving at higher levels certain work and students that need extra help that work also. And this is part of our response to intervention framework. It's for all students. It's not just for students that are struggling, it's also for students that are thriving. Our budget will also include investments in detailed data assessment, progress monitoring, as I said, and intervention, and as you know, has been part of our strategic plan. We also want to help prepare students for changes in science. As you know, science has been changing in New York State, how we study it, and over the past couple of years, we rolled out a new way of teaching science at our elementary school. This has been part of a focused implementation timeline to prepare for a new science assessment launching next school year. The new standard's based on both hands-on, minds-on learning experiences, so we will make investments in our lab materials at the elementary level. Actually, I like the elementary science program. It's something, one of the good things New York State is doing. Lastly, the one-to-one device ratio has been critical to our contemporary teaching and learning experiences. Our teachers have received extensive training in how to integrate technology into their instruction, and they're doing a great job. As you know, technology does not last forever. Just think about how many cellphone upgrades we have had go through lately. The budget we present at our next meeting will include funding to maintain our one-to-one program. We are also focusing on Tocco Middle School and Tocco High School. We have a number of exciting initiatives that have woven into our budget planning. Our primary focus is aligned with our strategic plan goals around contemporary teaching and learning. This is best accomplished through our work around the learner-active, technology-infused classroom or latic. Last year, we engaged innovative designs for education in a partnership to promote student agency and depth of understanding in our upcoming workshops. We will highlight this. So we will, as you come to board meetings, you'll see what we mean by this and the initiatives that we are using that modernize both our curriculum and our instruction. This includes investments in training, resources, and facilities. We have also been looking at the articulation of our English Language Arts Program at the secondary school. This multi-year initiative has included looking at inquiry-based curriculum design, mapping out resources and texts, reviewing our writing program, and analyzing next-generation standards in ELA. Our next budget will include some money set aside for books to better align novels and informational texts throughout the different grade levels. Staffing increases in the ELA department will be to better align our efforts to engage in responsive curriculum work throughout the year. The focus on reading and writing also extends outside the ELA classroom. Just this year, Dr. Keo and our writing coaches, Ms. Suzanne DiArco and Ms. Abby Benedetti, led training in Tier 2 vocabulary supports across content areas. We have trained teachers our resources and strategies to best prime students to understand and use high-level vocabulary, and that will continue to be enhanced in our budget. Similar to work at the Cottle, we prepare for new science learning standards. The middle school high school team are preparing for shifts that come with the New York State Learning Standards. Our science department has been implementing the phenomenon-based science instruction, where students observe a phenomenon and then unpack it through research and analysis. Last summer, one of our teachers worked on a standard-based instructional project where assessment is closely linked to individual standards, allowing for targeted support and intervention. Additionally, high school teachers have been trained in data analysis, technology, and formative assessments with Dr. Kathy Moser. She's coming back, she's been a consultant with us over the past year. This training has led us to cut down on some redundant resources and focus our training and implementation on more teacher-friendly, relevant programs. As you know, two of our science teachers, Ms. Melanie Buchanan and Ms. Gwen Burke, as well as math teacher Ms. Lauren Dean, are recognized by the New York State Department as master teachers and participate in high-level professional development around engaging science instruction that they will also share with us. One of our action items related to our retention problem of practice was surveying the families on reasons for transferring. Many cited reduced elective opportunities. We see this as an area we can address with our strategic budgeting. These include courses in marketing, fashion design, and high-level writing and literacy analysis, and we will talk to you about that when we go into our planning at the middle school, high school. And as we have mentioned, at the elementary level, we will continue to invest in our one-to-one device ratio with a replacement cycle at the sixth and the ninth grade level. We are delighted to have Mr. Arthur here with us tonight, and his early appointment means that Dr. Keo, Dr. Sweeney, Mr. Lenahan will have ample opportunity to plan with him to ensure he hits the ground running and that these initiatives succeed, that he also meets teachers and staff and gets, and parents and gets a feeling for our district. Also, we have some new extracurricular initiatives. Another area that existing families have identified as an area in which they would like to see the district invest more in exiting, not existing, exiting families, more in is extracurricular activities. You know, we can't complete completely with private schools, but we have kept on updating what we're doing. And we have plans to expand our ever-popular, our club at the elementary level. I mean, there was a waiting list that we had to even expand it this year. We also plan to invest in STEM opportunities. We are very proud of our technology and engineering offerings. These include cutting-edge tools and technology. Our mega-space is currently equipped with 3D printers, Y-Format plotters, and laser cutters. Staying ahead of the curve means staying ahead of, in funds to build these, be these types of systems for our kids. This aligns with efforts to meet engineering cross-cutting concepts, also part of the New York State Learning Standards. At the middle school, we have seen debate take off in leaps and bounds. We're so proud of our debate team and our students. They are such winners, and they are really competing against top private schools, and they are doing really well. It's, it's, it's pretty amazing. So under the dedicated leadership of Mrs. Sheila Moza and Mr. Patrick O'Connell, our students have competed against regional rivals, and our schools hosted a competition attended by many public and private middle and high school. Really top schools are, 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 are against us, and we are doing really well, and we're winning some. Our students are thriving under this intellectual challenge, and we want to be able to structure this also for the high school, because these kids are going to be high school-ready, and one of, another thing we heard from exiting families is that they miss the debate team. You know, so if we can give them that, it's more of a reason to stay in Tocco. Lastly, Mr. Calaswano has done a terrific job of managing our resources of the, at the athletic department. While we have allocated some of our funding, we're looking at allocating it in a different way to eliminate some things and add other things. We know that students have interests across, you know, we have students, more students interested in lacrosse lately. We want to make sure that we get those kinds of sports as students move up into our budget. On this slide, I share the leadership's team's commitment as we roll out our proposed budget over the next few meetings. Again, as I said before, we're gonna stay within the cap. We anticipate changes in the economic climate. We'll invest in programs aligned with our strategic plan, and we will make sure that we have transparency by having budget workshops to unpack elements of the budget and detail both processes and the final project and respond to questions and concerns. So here is the budget calendar. As you can see, last week, we kicked off a series of conversations with a comprehension overview of the financial landscape. Again, I'm so sorry that Ms. Sparks can't be here today. She does have COVID, so she won't be here for the next five days, but when she comes back and we do the next presentation, we'll have more fun financial facts for you. Tonight, I detailed our priorities and commitments, hopefully helping the board and community to understand where, what we are focusing our efforts in, in the upcoming presentation. At our next workshop on February 27, I will provide a comprehensive overview of my proposed budget. I will invite administrators to help answer questions, but if you note, the following two sessions will allow us to get a deep dive into each building. On March 13, we will focus on the middle school, high school. Joining us will be Dr. Lenahan, Dr. Keo, and Dr. Sweeney and assistant principals. They will provide more information about our work with the learner-active, technology-infused classrooms, curricular initiatives in ELA and math, and changes in the standards in science. On April 3, we will turn our attention to the elementary school. We will be joined by Mr. Marash, Dr. Doc, Mr. Kilgallen, Dr. Keo, and Dr. Sweeney, who will all talk about the work within the building that has engaged, that we're engaged in related to reading, as I said before, and also integrated co-teaching, literacy, and changes in the science standards. We will make sure that there are no questions left unanswered at our meetings. And on Monday, the 18, the board will vote to adopt the budget, and on Monday, April 8, the administrative team will, will present a final budget to the community for a hearing before that goes for an annual vote and trustee election on Tuesday, May 16. Thank you for your attention to this presentation. Thank you to all my administrative team that helped work on this and to the board for their steady advice and really trying to do what's best within the tax cap always, and I welcome any questions and feedback related to our priorities and commitment.
All right. Thank you. You gonna come back here?
I'll come back there.
All right, great. All right, thank you for that presentation. I know budgets, discussions are never all that fun or interesting, but they're, but they're very important.
They try.
No, no, it was good, it was good. But obviously, a lot of good stuff in there. We'll be excited to see sort of how the numbers churn out, but thank you for, for that, and obviously, all those initiatives are definitely in line with our strategic plan, so.
Your next week, in the next workshop, we should have a lot more information. We're getting the state aid idea. We're going, you know, what, what we think is our state aid, the initial, and we're also getting our building aid, what that will be, and we're also finding out, I know Ms. Sparks talked about transportation costs going up greatly, and we went out to bid, both for our students who go out of district and our students in district. We expect that to be a really big increase, unfortunately, but we'll see how all of that measures that, along with the initiatives that we would really like in terms of academics, which I presented tonight.
Yep.
To accomplish.
Yep. All right, great. All right, so this is comments by the board portion, so I'll just go down the line. If anyone has any comments about the presentation or anything in general. So I'll start to my far left. Therese, you want to go first?
Okay. Good evening. It's nice to see everybody here tonight. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Number one, the cheerleaders are going to national, so I want to wish them luck. And number two is, I know personally, as a parent, I heard a lot of positive feedback about the cafeteria. I know the kids were really excited to be in the new space. And I got videos and got more than a one-word answer when I asked how school was, so I feel like that was success. And looking forward to the library. Construction is always a very frustrating process. And I want to thank Dr. Goodman, obviously Faith Sparks, and our team for really doing their very best and putting a lot of time into moving this along despite delays and supply chain issues and everything else that they've had to face along the way. Because I feel like we're coming to the finish line, and we're ready for our next big project. I wanted to also say to Mr. Arthur, who's here tonight, I did not meet you when you came to the board. I've heard very good things about you and a lot of positive feedback. And I also want to thank everybody who was involved in the very lengthy process in hiring a high school, middle school principal. There were a lot of, you know, staff and administrators and
Parents.
Parents. Thank you. I was going to say, community members who were involved. And I want to thank anybody who volunteered their time. We're excited about the next chapter for Tocco. And I think that's it for me tonight.
That's good. There's a lot of stuff, Therese. Stuff.
I know, and it was all like on the fly.
All right. Lori?
Congratulations to our cheerleaders. I'm excited for you and the wonderful experience that you're getting ready to embark upon. You took my thunder with the whole cafeteria. My daughter came home and was like, I'm like, how is the cafeteria? She's like, oh, my gosh, you should see the lights. They go like all different colors. It's so cool, Mom. So cool. I feel like I'm in college. I was like, oh, okay, you know. So that was very good, good feedback. So I'm looking forward to the library being opened. And again, I want to make sure that we implement as part of our plan and reopening to get community members out to do a nice tour of the investment that they're making in our community. Yeah, I think everyone should see. It's pretty cool. Yeah, exciting.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll go last. I'll skip over myself. Laura, you want to go next?
Sure. Hi, good evening. Thank you for everybody attending tonight and at home, listening. Yeah, I just wanted also, my son made the comment, he's a junior, and he said, this is the first time in two and a half years that he's sat at a table with all his friends and had lunch. So, you know, we thank the staff for making that. Dr. Goodman, Faith Sparks, and all the people that pushed that along, because it has been a rough, a lot of delays and things. So we're grateful for that, and we're grateful for the library. You guys are gonna, that's really gonna be a great addition for the kids, too. I did want to mention that in the presentation, there's a workshop, and I just want to mention to the parents here and those who are listening at home. I think it's March, did you say March 13th is the middle school and high school one? Right? I just encourage anyone, you know, listening and interested just to pay attention to that one. And myself, particularly, if you have questions, and it'll be very interesting. Dr. Keo is going to present, along with other administrators, about things that have been working on and things that they're going to be working in terms of next year. But it's an interesting one, just to pay attention to. Any questions you have about curriculum, and we have a lot of teachers in our district, a lot of parents that have great resources, so I encourage feedback and comments and sort of just input. It's always helpful for us. And that is all I wanted to add. And Pasala?
Well, always at the end, there's like nothing left to say. But I am so thankful to see so many people out there, because so often, we're here and there's, we don't see the audience, so it's kind of very nice to see everybody out there. I know, I've heard so many great things about the cafeteria. Unfortunately, my daughter doesn't eat in the cafeteria. I'm trying to encourage her to, so I hope she does. But I honestly, I wish I was back in high school, because it is so really cool, the cafeteria, and excited for the library and things to come. I did want to say, I did have the pleasure of meeting Mr. Arthur, so it is really exciting to have you coming aboard. And before we came in here, we had the pleasure of speaking with some of your colleagues, I think a student and other people, and they had nothing but great things to say about you. So we're just really excited, you know, to have you on our team. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'll echo that as well. I also wanted to echo Therese's comments about thanking all of the team members that participated in the Hiring Committee for our middle school, high school principal. I know a lot went into that. It was a very extensive process. And we got a lot of help and a lot of input on that, so I want to thank all of them. And I am too very excited about the next chapter for the middle school, high school. And we're excited to see what happens. We're looking forward to it. So, thank you all for that. And then I wanted to take a little bit of my time and do a little plug for the new capital bond vote, which is February 15th. This is our last board meeting before that vote. And I think it's actually timely with the discussion of the budget, even though it's not the same thing, but everything's always intertwined, because Dr. Goodman talked about some of the drivers that's going to, that's going to impact how much money we're going to have to spend on these great initiatives. She mentioned state aid. She mentioned transportation costs. But another big one is energy costs. Energy costs have gone up quite a bit, and it definitely will be impacting our budget this year, which is why I think this new bond proposal is so important, because so much of what that work will be, if it passes, is about making us more energy efficient. It's about fixing all of the problems we have in our infrastructure that's costing us lots of money in repairs and lots of money in extra energy costs, so. So if that bond was to fail, it would definitely impact our future sort of planning, budget-wise. So it all intertwines. So we really appreciate the support. You guys have been supporting us all along. We appreciate that, and we're asking for it one more time on February 15th. So please come on out and vote, and please encourage your neighbors to do the same. So that's all I have.
I just want to say one more thing about the bond. So our middle school and high school students are enjoying an absolutely beautiful, modern cafeteria. And part of that bond is to do the same thing at Cottle. And we will, you know, you may see pictures of what it will look like, but I promise you, when we pick out the furniture ourselves, it will even look better. So let's remember that that's also for Cottle.
All right, great. Okay, so our next agenda item is First Recognition of the Audience. This is for items on the agenda and only for items on the agenda. Do we have anyone that wants to speak about the agenda? Yep, yep. Just a reminder, we have quite a bit of people in the audience today. Just our policy on public comments, just so everyone's aware, just a reminder. Three-minute time limit, obviously keeping good decorum and professionalism, which I don't expect anything, anything less than that from you, Beth.
It's me, Pete, really.
And also, just, you know, just a reminder to you, we don't use this time to speak about individual students or individual staff members.
Yeah. So, thank you, Dr. Goodman. Oh, I'm sorry, Beth Ann Silvestri, 11 Gifford Street. Thank you, Dr. Goodman, for those beautiful comments about John. That was beautiful. And thank you both for meeting with him. He enjoyed meeting with you both.
He's a great kid.
Thank you. So my question is, you mentioned with Cottle that students would be reassessed with their reading. Will that be completed by a reading-certified person or just a general education teacher?
So there are different assessments that are done with our students. So we give local assessments. Students who are in special education, or if they're getting AIS, then they're assessed by a specialist. But our foundations has assessments, our iReddy has assessments. We have, we have, so we don't go by one assessment. We go by multiple assessments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Angela, do you have anything from the PTA tonight, or no? You're good? Okay.
I'm looking forward to the bingo this week. Yes, yes, Thursday.
Thursday. What's it, this Thursday coming up?
This Thursday coming up.
Bingo. Do a little plug.
Do a little plug for that.
Yes, yes. It is, oh, it's sold out. That's great.
You're bragging.
Okay, well, I'm bragging. I'm sorry. I'm going. I got a hot ticket. Well, the guys can come. Maybe they would win for their wives or daughters, right? Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
All right, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 10. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Laura, any discussion on these items? All in favor? Okay. All right. Brings us to business of the board. Accept an Audit Report. Resolved, and the Board of Education accepts the district's Single Audit Uniform Guidance Audit Report for June 30th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Second?
Oh, sorry.
Laura, any discussion on this?
I'll just make a comment on that, just being part of the Facilities Committee. This is just a standard compliance with federal programs. We had our accountants go through an audit, and there were no findings to report. They, in other words, passed the testing. We also were, not just this one, but we had another report on standard audits, and everything passed very well. So we're doing very well with all these audits. That's great.
Great. That's good.
So I think Laura meant the Finance Committee, not the Facilities.
Oh, you were there, Therese, right?
No, because she said the Facilities Committee.
Laura sits on every committee.
Sorry, Finance, Finance.
Yeah, Laura sits on all the committees.
Yeah, I want that one, too.
And I just wanted to also echo what Laura said and congratulate Faith Sparks on a really very excellent audit and review.
Yeah.
We have a very strong business office, and I think that was clear during that.
Well said. She does a phenomenal job. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I don't think we voted yet, did we? All in favor? All right, great. Next item is not a votable item. It's just the second reading of a policy change, so.
Approve an agreement.
Did we skip two? Oh, I skipped two. I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me honest, Rob. Approve an Agreement. Resolved to approve an agreement with Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corp. for mandatory coverage of sporting events for the 2022-2023 season in the amount of $2,800. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Therese, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay. Now this, now we're at the second reading of Policy 0110. So we have two policy readings tonight. We're not actually going to read the policy. We're just going to discuss quickly what the changes are to the existing policy. And these are changes that are required per law, per New York State educational law. So first one, like I said, is the Sexual Harassment Policy, Policy 0110. And our current sexual harassment policy is one policy that addresses the sexual harassment of students and employees. Due to recent changes in state law and that sexual harassment in the workplace, the district is required to separate into three separate policies and regulations. One is an introductory statement. The next addresses sexual harassment of students, and the last addresses sexual harassment of employees. The new policy's also changed the wording from shall to will or must. So those are the changes, and if anyone wants to read the entire amended policy, it's on Board Docs. You feel free to do that, and then the next board meeting, we'll be reading and then voting, voting for those policy change. Next item is similar. Another policy, Policy 0100, which is Equal Opportunity and Nondiscrimination Policy. Same thing. These are some changes that were mandated to us by the state. I don't have the recap on those, right? Yeah. Do you remember what they were? You have it? Okay. Thank you. Our current sexual harassment policy is one policy that addresses, I'm sorry. It's the, wait, what's the? Actually, it says it, though. It's just a repeat of the one below. Yeah, so it says equal opportunity, but it's the same language. Do you remember what the changes were? I'm trying to remember from last time what it was.
You can look at last time.
What's that?
You can look at last time.
Yeah, let me just look at the last one.
All right, we'll come back. We'll come back to it. Yeah. You can go ahead and read it. You can go ahead and read it, Robyn.
Okay, so Policy Number 0100 is the Equal Opportunity and Nondiscrimination Policy. This policy offers a blanket notice of nondiscrimination of all legally protected classes, addresses public notification requirements, and setting up a grievance procedure for allegations of civil rights violations. This policy also addresses website accessibility for persons with disabilities.
All right. Thank you very much. So there's nothing for the vote on there. Same thing. It's just a second reading. We'll vote on it next time. Okay. That's all the business of the board we had tonight. Pretty short agenda, so that brings us to personnel recommendations. The first item is to appoint a Tocco Middle School and High School Principal. Before we go ahead and do that, I'm just going to turn it over to Dr. Goodman. She has a few comments to make.
Good evening again. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of reporting on the conclusion of a rigorous search process for our next middle school, high school principal. Before sharing my recommendations to the board, I want to thank Dr. Linehan for his years of service. His steady leadership is appreciated by the board, community, students, and staff. Replacing him proved no easy task. As we shared his plans, as he shared his plans with the district early, we could get ahead of the other districts and meet with impressive candidates. To capture this slate of candidates, the district conducted an initial screening of applicants organized by a small committee for a blind review of resumes, which means all names were taken off and blacked out, and invited nine candidates in for an interview with representatives of our bargaining unit. So each unit decided who would be coming as part of this process. They came up with two finalists through a very rigorous process. There was a rubric, and then they measured strengths and weaknesses, and they talked, and they voted. I was not in that part, but two finalists met with me, and a single finalist was sent to the Board of Education for final approval. In additions to a series of questions aligned with stakeholder feedback as to what the community, faculty, and student body expected from the leader, our finalist presented a performance task in which he led a simulated training on innovative teaching practices. It is a pleasure to introduce Mr. Rodney Arthur, who is joined tonight by his families and friends. This is a celebration. Our search committee had very high standards, and they were highly impressed with Mr. Arthur's philosophy and dedication. During the interview process, he quickly rose to the top of the pack. In conversations with Mr. Arthur, his references also spoke very eloquently of his, of his great successes in their school. His interviews stood out because of the rich content and substance. He doesn't just talk the talk. He walks the walk. Again, his references spoke to his unwavering work ethic and his high standards he holds for students, staff, and most importantly, himself. Mr. Arthur has worked in large, diverse districts and led change in complicated systems. He has sought out our small district for a sense of community, warm teaching staff, and academic prestige. He knows with this staff, this board, this administration, and this community, we can, he can lead the district and his schools to higher levels. I am especially excited about his experience with the International Baccalaureate Program. Some of you might have recalled, we spoke about this as a board when I first came. It's a worldwide educational program founded to provide students the opportunity to receive a rigorous, connected education. It really is very much a pre-college program. It's a bit expensive. We may not be doing that right away. But in his interview with the board, he had ideas on how we could get there and put some of those initiatives into a school, into our schools. The courses offered are intended to develop students' intellectual, emotional, personal, and social skills. And he talked about the skills that students really need for college in the 21st century and how he could use a lot of what he knows about the IB program with our students to raise all students to very high levels. In his presentation to the search committee, he scaffolded teachers' use of diversion questioning through the use of question starters and discussion protocols. Within the framework of IB, he shared command terms like analyze, clarify, and interpret. Because you know, that is what, what not only colleges, but businesses want students to be able to do, to ensure students are being int- to ensure students are being intensely pushed to the depths of concepts learned in their classrooms. Dr. Lenahan and our staff have set a high bar. The hardworking teachers of Tuckahoe deserve an experienced building leader who has been tested in many different districts. Our students deserve an instructional visionary who sees their potential. Our community deserves a principal who is dynamic, forward-thinking, and accessible. After a series of interviews, performance tasks, and professional reference checks, I am confident that Mr. Arthur is the leader that we need in Tuckahoe Middle School, High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Well, let's make it official. Resolved the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools appoints Rodney Arthur as principal of the Tuckahoe Middle School and Tuckahoe High School in the tenure area of principal with a three-year probationary appointment effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026 at an annual salary of $200,000 per year. For the 2023-2024 school year, Mr. Arthur holds lead evaluator, school district administration, school building administration, and special education K-12 certifications. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia, all in favor? All right. I want to just welcome you and your family, your beautiful family, to our district on behalf of the entire board and the community. We're very excited to have you. Welcome to our family.
Yes, I do have that voice of a principal. First of all, I just want to, before I even thank the board and the community, I just want to give a real shout out to John and Samantha for an excellent presentation. And certainly, one day, maybe my daughter Camila and Samantha may be on the same campus at Indiana University. So, yes, again, good evening, Board President Casson and Vice President Benke, Board Trustees, Dr. Goodman, members of the Tuckahoe community. I'm honored and humbled to stand here before you as the next principal of Tuckahoe Middle High School. I'm joined tonight by my wife of many years, Dr. Tanya Law Arthur, my daughter Camila, my son Marcus, former colleagues and friends. I would like to thank, I'm not sure if she made it, but I'd like to thank Kathy Hope for being here. Kathy, her father served faithfully, his name was John Ventura, served faithfully as the Tuckahoe principal at Cottle's Elementary School, as well as superintendent of schools during the 1960s. I'd also like to thank Ms. Roseanne Kachone, who's here with her son Anthony, another dear friend of mine, who grew up in Tuckahoe on Ridge Street and attended the Immaculate Conception Church. While I did not grow up in Tuckahoe, my friends did and shared with me their experiences, and I thank them for that. Like so many members of the Tuckahoe community, according to my friend Roseanne, my experience is somewhat similar. My family, I was not born here. I was born in England and grew up in Trinidad, and I came here in 1979. From dedicating myself to hard work and scholarship and dreaming about that American dream, I stand here before you. Dreams do come true. Some may ask, why did I apply to be the principal of Tuckahoe Middle High School? It's quite simple. Tuckahoe is a vibrant community known throughout Westchester County as a close-knit community where everyone knows everyone. It's with the school community that students, where students feel safe, respected, nurtured. Nurtured, which is a very strong word.
Yeah.
Encouraged and well-known by the faculty and staff. It is a community filled with committed educators who are dedicated to their craft and their love of children. It is a community where the school board works in partnership with the superintendent of schools to ensure excellence for all. This is the reason why I applied to be the principal of Tuckahoe Middle High School. I'm looking forward to build strong, authentic relationships with the faculty and staff, with students and their families. I'm also looking forward to work closely with the school board, Dr. Goodman, members of the leadership team, the faculty and staff, to implement the various components of the strategic plan and the board's goal and mission. As a principal, I look forward to using my experience supervising the International Baccalaureate Program, my background in special ed, to explore additional course offering for our students, to advance our project-based learning opportunity for students, and ensuring that all of our scholars are challenged and prepared to meet the demands of an ever-changing world. As I complete my 20th year working as an educator, administrator, I should say, I would like to thank, I would like the Tuckahoe community to know that I'm a passionate educator who promises to serve children and their family faithfully. I have high expectations of myself and for those I supervise. I believe in accountability and I will never compromise on making the best decision for our scholars. I have an open-door policy, and I look forward to building relationships with all stakeholders. As the late Rita Pearson once said, "Every child deserves a champion," and I intend to be the champion for our children. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm so excited. I can't even take it. I mean, we have like such great administrators. Can I just, I'm gonna take a moment, just a moment. So, yesterday, I had, whatever, I can't. What? I take after you. What? And so, yesterday, I had the opportunity to run into a current teacher who's been here at Tuckahoe for more than 20 years. And she got me outside on the streets and she said, "Dr. Gerald, I just want to tell you how proud I am of this board and of this district. I cannot tell you how excited I am about the new appointment that we are going to have at the middle school and the high school. It is a long time coming. We are excited about the changes that will come, that will encourage and inspire our children to be the best that they can be, every child." And I just want to thank you. She literally hugged me three times. And so, I just want to thank you so much for coming here, going through the rigorous process that you did. We support you. I believe our school community support you. We will hold you accountable, too. Okay? Okay. And because that's what we do here. That's just what we do. We had the opportunity to have a principal's coffee, I guess, a week or so ago. And one of the things that I talked about was that when I came here 11 years ago, lots of things were not great. It just wasn't for a lot of people. And I have seen the transition and the pivot that we have taken towards a trajectory that really speaks to excellence in education, excellence in culture, and climate. And I want you to know, you fit right in just perfectly. And I support you and I salute you and thank you so much for being here with us.
All right. Thank you. People on the street call you doctor?
Yeah, I know. That's like so freaking.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
All right. We have a few more personnel recommendations. Last item on the agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves personnel actions, items A through C as outlined below. Do I have a motion on that? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion on these items? All in favor? Okay. And that brings us to our second recognition of the audience. This can be for any items at all, not just agenda. Any, anyone want to speak?
Superintendent Goodman, President of the Board and Board Members, greetings this afternoon. And to the newly appointed principal of the Tuckahoe High School and Middle School, I'm the Reverend Dr. Michael Gerald. I pastor Shiloh Baptist Church of Tuckahoe. My wife just spoke and welcomed you to the community. And I want you to know that in times like these that we're living in, they're pivotal and leadership is critical. Everything hinges on leadership. And having the right person in the right position will forge and help to forge for our children academic success and personal success. You refer to our children as scholars.
Yeah.
Not students, but scholars, which demarcates to every parent in this district that you see every child as a person who is educable and can achieve high levels of academic performance. And I want to thank you personally for taking the helm of this ship at this critical juncture. You know, in the ancient book of the Bible, at pivotal times, prophets rose to talk and to encourage the people. And I believe that you are our educational prophet for the time. And I believe by faith that you're going to do not only a yeoman's job, but you will lead this district to higher heights and deeper depths. And I want you to know that we have some members of our church who are here. We want you to know that we support you. We've been praying for you already, and we're not going to stop. And with this partnership, with this partnership, I believe great things are in store for all of our children, black children. I want to echo the words of Martin Luther King when he said, "White children and black children will hold hands together and they will sing, 'We will overcome.'" So, thank you very much on your historic appointment, and you have a partner in the Shiloh Baptist Church. Thank you, Board Members. Thank you, Dr. Goodman, for your courage. Thank you for your outstanding vision. And we thank you for moving this community, this educational community forward. So, you, too, have our support. Come on, put your hands together for Dr. Goodman.
Hello. Hello. I'm Stacy Sheffield. I'm a graduate of the Tuckahoe Schools. I have a senior. I have two kids that have already graduated, and I have a stepson that's in the 11th grade. But I'm here and I'm piggybacking on what, and congratulations and welcome to Tuckahoe. I'm piggybacking on what Reverend Dr. Gerald just said about the progress of all of our students. I'm a retired assistant principal, special ed, but I currently work at a program. It's an internship program. It's called Project Search. And I just wanted to bring the information to the community and to the board. It's a program for young adults with developmental disabilities. And right now, we're out of Lawrence Hospital, and it's a year-long internship where the students have the opportunity to work in different departments throughout the hospital. They're getting curriculum, they're getting teacher, teaching and lessons from certified special educators. We have teaching, I'm sorry. Did you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's just a great opportunity. So, when I got the job in September, I was really expecting some of our students to be there. So, it was kind of disappointing that there are students from Eastchester, Yonkers, Mount Kisco, Pleasantville, and we don't have any of our students there. So, I really just wanted to open it up to you guys, and hopefully you can send somebody out. You can always ask for a tour, and we'll walk you around the hospital. You can see what the students are doing and see if it's something that any of our kids can fit into the program.
Sure. Can I just ask you a quick question? So, for, it's specifically for special ed students who are current in a school, they don't have to be a particular age. It can be...
It's up to age. I think we have a 23-year-old. So, it's up to like 23.
Oh, great. Great. And do they, do they, does it, this opportunity lend itself to them being able to get jobs in other locations, hospital locations?
Yeah. So, we have a job developer that works with them after they complete the program, and it really helps them get jobs. Like, we have people working at Beth Israel. This is just a really, really good program. Just watching them learn the skills, like simple things that we do every day that we forget to tell them, that they just don't know. Job skills, how to, how do you speak to your employer? How do you tell your employer that you're not coming into that? Basic things that we're doing with them every single day from September to June.
Okay. So, I am aware of the program because we had it in your shell. I think we started out of there. So, I will have, can you get in touch with Dr. Kate Sweeney?
Okay.
She's our director of special education.
So, it would just be nice because the hospital did it because they wanted it to be a community-based, but yet we don't have too many community students involved.
Okay. Thank you for being on our attention. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. We can adjourn our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Lori, second. Teraz, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Great night, February 15th. Don't forget to come out and vote, please.
Please vote for the bond.
Thank you.